We are creating a totally new drainage system from the north end of our city to the southeast part of our city, as well as on the south side to improve that drainage going out of our city sooner. Has nothing to do with the golf course or anything like that. It is just something that we need to do to make sure that there is no more property loss in our city. And that is the goal for this particular project.
Well, I would like to make a comment. Am I coming over the speaker system?
Yes, Mr. Gorgeous, please.
My name is Matt Gorgeous and I live at 5124 Papaya Circle and have lived there now for 39 years. Also was one of the developers in the area. The whole city of Palm Valley is only 389 acres. That's it. Completely surrounded by Harlingen. And golf course takes up about 130 acres of that. I am sure that the city officials have employed qualified people to evaluate the situation. And there's no question that this is the most economical decision for the city to make. And I want to say that personally, I endorse this project just as much as it's possible to endorse something. We need to correct the drainage. It is the most economical solution for the city. And it has been 50 years since the ponds have been cleaned of silt, much of which has happened because this deterioration of the sides, but also because the pipes are clogged up. And you can't do something halfway. It's long overdue. It's definitely been a factor in the flooding. And I don't think anyone wants to continue to be vulnerable to what's happened several times. Three that I can remember in the 38 years that I've been here. It's expensive. It's not the way to do things. And I tuned in specifically to say that I fully support what the city is doing. And I thank you for putting this together and moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorgeous. Do I hear someone else would like to make a comment on the creation of the utility system? At this time also, I want to make sure for the record that we do have Councilman Eric Hoff on Zooms. Am I correct to say that, Elsa?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Also, I want to take the time here. David Flynn, are you on, David?
Yes, sir.
David, can you do a quick little discussion or presentation on the projects that this $3.5 million is going to pay for? What will it do for our city as far as drainage system?
Yes, sir, I sure will. So, the first project will be the the golf course lake, which is being paid for by the Drainage District. It will fall under the city's management and construction. The second project is a storm sewer bypass line for lakes four through seven, which are the lakes north of Bugandia, all the way up to the north end of the North Lake. And that pipeline will bypass the lake and will have valves that we can control and drain the lakes if we need to. The third project is improving the drainage at Papaya Circle over to the golf course drainage ditch. And then the fourth project, which will be completed over several years, is to remove the silt from the lakes.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other comments on creation of the public drainage utility system? Mayor?
Yes. Can I ask David Flynn a question?
Absolutely, sir.
David, these projects that we're talking about, if they had been completed prior to this, the last event that we had in 2019, what would be the difference in the level of the water that would have been in Palm Valley as opposed to what we did have?
The golf course drainage would have allowed or resulted in the water surface that we experienced six inches lower. The Drainage District itself is getting grant money to build detention ponds northwest of Palm Valley. That will lower the water surface by an additional foot. And then the two bypassed pipelines conservatively will lower the water surface another six inches. So that would have been two, the combined total would be two feet.
Thank you.
Any other public comments from our citizens of Palm Valley that want to discuss the creation of the utility system?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask Bobby a question related to Ms. Gibbs's comment to get some clarification?
If it's about fees, we could wait for the second public hearing that we're going to talk about fees. Is it a fee question?
It had to do with her wanting to finance the project with $5 a month. I was just wondering how many years that would take.
Let's table that for the second public hearing on the fees. Keep that, that's a great question though. Thank you. Any public comments from citizens of Palm Valley? Before I close this public hearing, I just want to make sure that people understand that we cannot, the city of Palm Valley cannot suffer like we suffered in June 2019. We cannot do that again. And for this, for this city to not do anything about it when we can, it's just not right. So with that said, I just want to make sure people understand we're not here to enhance the golf course. We're not here to make it look pretty. We are here to use the golf course to our purposes. And our purpose is to get the water off our streets and out of our homes and let it go where it wants to go quicker and faster and out of our city. That is the goal. And that's what we, that's the plan and that's what we have put in place. We, that's what we want to do. So with that said, if there is no more public comments on this creation, I am going to close this part of the public hearing. I now close the public hearing at 6:23. Item number six. It's consideration and approval of an ordinance declaring adoption of the Municipal Drainage Utility System Act, making and adopting findings declaring the drainage of the city of Palm Valley to be a public utility and incorporating existing drainage facility, materials and supplies into the drainage utility system, and identifying the service area of the system. Item number six, council, you saw the ordinance. I need a motion.
Adopt an ordinance creating a utility system.
So moved, I need a second.
Who made that motion, Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem, Michael Govan.
I know, I know him.
I second.
Councilman Jerry Wade, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? For the record, I want to make sure that everyone, or for the record, just want to make sure that all four councilmen and women that are present voted for the adoption of creating the utility system.
Yes.
All right. Item number seven. Public hearing to hear comments for or against the adoption of drainage utility charges within the city of Palm Valley. Item number seven. Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Govan.
Yes, I moved at the city council, open the public hearing concerning the adoption of drainage utility charges.
I need a second.
Second, Mayor.
Councilman Hoff, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare a public hearing that is now open to hear comments for or against the adoption of the charges within the city of Palm Valley. So council and audience, as you saw in the one, the Valley Morning Star, we placed it on our
Website.
Our website. We also placed, we also put it on Nextdoor. We also sent out a special flyer explaining the monthly water charges, so fees that we'll be charging to pay for this $3.5 million loan. With that said, I want to introduce you to our financial consultants, which is Eric Estrada in Hinojosa. Bobby Villarreal, Don Gonzalez are on the call. And Bobby or Don, I would like for you to explain what we're borrowing, how we're paying it, and your recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Can you hear, everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. You're loud and clear.
Yeah, Bobby Villarreal and Don Gonzalez, Matt Luhon for Estrada de Hossa. So again, the project fund that the engineers have provided was about $4 million and change. And of course, the city at the last meeting had decided to borrow 3.4 million and put about $650,000 in fund balance or savings to the project. So the direction from the council last, at the meeting prior, was to go out and borrow a project fund of about 3.4 million at 20 years. And so essentially, the most advantageous or most cost-effective method is to borrow through the Texas Water Development Board. And currently, as it exists right now, there is a drainage project with the Cameron County Drainage District with the city. And essentially, there's about a million for project happening, and that's zero cost to the city. So that's a good thing. And going forward, the Water Development Board has advantageous interest rates that we're looking at and hoping to, as we apply for the loan with them, if y'all were to move forward with these charges, we anticipated that we would have an annual debt service payment of about 219,853 approximately. And so based upon that, over 20 years, the estimate was if the city has put out for consideration a charge of $24 on residential, 60 on the commercial, and 75 per month on the recreational. And so essentially, if you have that hand up there, that would give you about $1,556 of coverage above your debt payment. So essentially, that's about 1.08 coverage. That's pretty, pretty tight. It's what we are considering today. And that would be our recommendation is to at least do the 24, the 60, and the 75. And I think in regards to that question about what happens if you went to $5, it's just simply untenable. As you see these numbers, this is getting us just enough to where we can, we can get to addressing the debt service for this much-needed project. So, you know, I think, Mary, you've seen the numbers in the council too. The five is just not, it's just, it's too far away. And so with that, I guess I would just, if there's any questions or if Don
I have a question. You indicated
I'm sorry, can you, can you, I'm sorry, can you state your name, please? I'm sorry. I know it's you.
Jeanette Edgley.
Thank you, Jeanette.
And the only thing I have is a question in reference to the gentleman's figures. He indicated, at least I heard, 24, 60, 75. Is that correct? Is that what he indicated?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. It's $24 per residential unit. It's $60 a month per commercial unit and $75 per recreational unit.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because the flyer indicates that it would be 40 per commercial.
That is correct. We did place a flyer that it was 40 for commercial. However, our financial advisors advised that we should charge 60 for commercial. And that was what was placed on the newspaper for the announcement that we did on Valley Morning Star. So we
I wanted to be
Thank you, Jeanette.
Mayor? Mayor? Eric?
Yeah, Councilman Hoff, go ahead, please.
Just to clarify, how many commercial, I mean, we're 99% residential or some incredibly high figure, but how many commercial accounts do we have in Palm Valley? And how many recreational accounts do we have in Palm Valley?
Five.
We have a, we have a total of 38 commercial units. What I mean by units is a door. And we also have two recreational facilities that we'll be able to charge.
Okay, and how many residential are we estimating?
727 units.
Okay.
Total, total 770 units.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for anyone that's listening.
Thank you, that does help.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, is Bobby again, just if I may, and maybe Don wants to add some color to this, but the reason you want a little bit over for coverage is with Water Development Board, they're going to want to make sure that there's coverage. And that also, as you know, there's possibilities of delinquencies and mispayments and that sort of thing. So you do not want to fall behind.
We definitely don't want to fall behind, Bobby. This is new territory for the city of Palm Valley. We have never been in this situation before, only because I believe probably nobody has asked. But this is a situation that is long overdue. And we want to make sure that we stand in good standings with the state of Texas. Absolutely.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify or make it, make it clear that individual residents are going to be paying $24 a month. And the country club is going to be paying basically five times that amount. They're going to be paying $150 a month.
That is correct. Any other, any other comments on the fees that are proposed to be, to be built? Ladies and gentlemen, this is something that I, as a resident, I'm sure the other city council members don't like either. However, this council and I understand that this is something that has to be done and it should have been done, like Mr. Gorgeous said, 30, 40 years ago. And it was never done. So stretching out this payment over for 20 years, the future residents of Palm Valley are going to be responsible to pay the most of this. However, we do have some responsibility. It is our home. And I, for one, do not want to get flooded ever again. And I could probably speak with the rest of the council members. I believe three of the six were flooded as well. I think maybe four. So this is something that is very dear to my heart. I do not want to see people suffer again.
Mayor, I was flooded, my wife and I were flooded. And $288 a year is a wonderful amount to pay to not have that happen again.
And Mr. Mayor, I was not significantly flooded. I was very lucky. I was one of the very lucky ones. I had minor damage and I don't mind paying $24 a month to help out our city and make sure that it doesn't happen again and all the residents whose houses were devastated. I think that's, you know, that's the community thing to do.
Thank you. Any other comments from our citizens? Not hearing any. I am going to declare that this public hearing be closed at 6:36. Item number eight. Consideration and approval of an ordinance levying drainage utility charges, providing for segregation of income, providing for discontinuance of utility service, providing for due date of charges and iniquity charges, and establishing billing procedures. Now, council, our financial advisors are advising that we bill for residential dwelling units, $24. Commercial property units, $60 per unit. Recreational property, $75 per unit. That is what our our financial advisors are advising. With that said, I'll leave that up for discussion and comments and/or motions.
Your Honor, I would like to move, if there's no comments or questions, I would like to move that the city council adopt an ordinance adopting the drainage utility charges.
Second, Mayor.
So we have a motion from City Councilwoman Lisa Taylor. And we also have a second of Councilman Hoff. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? For the record, let the record show that all four council members present voted for the adopting of the monthly fees of 24, 60, and 75. Thank you. Item number nine. Discussion and possible action to select a bond council for future drainage improvement projects. We want to do item number nine, 10, and 11 together. Item number 10 is discussion and possible action to select an engineer for future drainage improvement projects. And discussion and possible action to select financial advisory services for financing future drainage improvement projects. These three items, I selected a committee to review the the proposals and the submissions of qualifications of several individuals and several companies that submitted. We put out a, an advisement in the paper and we received a total of, how many, Sylvia?
It was about three for each category.
About three for each category. And my committee is present. That's Howard Tazo and John Top. Between the three and our city secretary, Sylvia Trevino. We assessed them and I will leave, I will open the floor up to now Howard Tazo to explain the process of how we did, how we came up with the results. Go ahead, Mr. Tazo.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Very good, okay. There is a evaluation criteria done by the state where you take the bids, they're not bids, there's no, there's no financials discussed in these bids. Requests for information from firms that want to be in business with Palm Valley. And John and I and the mayor went through this. And what you do is you have, you assign up to 60 points for experience, 25 for work performance, and 15 for capacity to inform. I'm trying to go a little fast here, but we went through this very thoroughly. I can't prove it to you, but I, we did. And let me start with the engineers. There were actually four engineering firms, okay, who were who were interested. And one of them is Ambiotech of Brownsville. One of them is Guzman and Munoz from Mercedes. One was Ferris and Flynn from Palm Valley. And one was SWG from Weslaco, who has an office in McCown. The the experience was very similar all the way around. You know, as you know, for example, Frank Ferris and David Flynn, he's got more than 30 years in engineering. And most of the chief engineers were in that category. We gave a little extra, we basically recommend the selection of Ferris and Flynn. And the reason is, they've already worked in Palm Valley. They're in Palm Valley. They've done work here. They know the streams, the ponds, the water currents, the water pressures. They know this like the back of their hand. And we thought that would be a real, give them an advantage in anything we did in the future. Now, keep in mind, this isn't a lifetime contract or anything like that. So when you talk about work done in the future and so forth, I mean, the council can change its mind and do something else. But for this purpose and to comply with the state's request that these things be done this way, which we did, that's what we did. We recommend Ferris and Flynn. Bond council. Well, interesting, there were three firms interested in that. These are the lawyers that put together municipal bond exposure and municipal bond packages and so forth and so on. And we eliminated one, there were three, and we eliminated one pretty, pretty quickly because they had, for example, only 19 issues in the past five years of Texas Water Development Board. And 10 of those were actually done by somebody that was in another firm. So they're counting 10 of those 19 from a guy that didn't do it for them. So they were a little weaker than the others in terms of experience in this area. The other was McCall, McCall, Parker, and Horton of San Antonio. Good firm, 100 years old. And they'd done 125 debt series since 2013 in this area. One of the problems we had with them was that they are also a client of the, I mean, Texas Water Development Board is a client of theirs. Which we, you know, that could mean nothing or it could be a conflict of interest down the line somehow. Firm we selected, also a 100-year-old firm, Norton Rose Fulbright out of Austin. They've actually done 65 TWDB bonds in the last three years. And more before that. So they are very, very experienced. They're at the cutting edge of doing this sort of doing this sort of work. And it was a close grading situation, but they, but they came out on top.
Who, who was the firm you eliminated?
The, well, one is basically ranked number two and close to Norton Rose Fulbright was McCall, Parkhurst, and.
Right. I got that one, but I didn't hear the name.
Harrington and Sutcliffe out of Houston. They're also about a hundred-year-old firm, but they don't really deal in water development and, you know, type of bonds. That's not their, not even close to their primary.
Very good.
You know. Business. And finally, there's of course the financial advisor. We've got two proposals for the financial advisors. And we chose the Estrada Hinojosa, who you've heard from tonight, versus SAMCO Capital, S-S-A-M-C-O Capital in San Antonio. We like the fact that SAMCO is about five years older than Estrada Hinojosa. They go back to nineteen eighty-seven versus nineteen ninety-two. But Hino is number one in Texas. I say Hino, I shouldn't call him. Estrada Hinojosa is number one in Texas. And SAMCO is number two, but many of those are school board bonds. Nobody has the experience in the water sewage drainage areas as Estrada. So you heard from Bobby Villarreal tonight. Estrada Hinojosa also has offices in Chicago, Los Angeles, New York, and Miami. And the reason I'm, and experience in forty-four states. And the reason I mention this is because of the reason we consider this, is because you're talking about an, an organization here that knows how bonds are done, how municipal bonds are done, how state governments work all over the country. And they may come up with something that applies to here. In other words, they have, they just have a depth of experience regarding that sort of thing, regarding how these things are done here, and they will. And in, in, since they're obviously working with the state constantly, they are also in good possession, a good position to be advocates for improvements in the way things are done in Texas. Because of, because of them doing it all over the place. So anyway, that's oh, they also have more business down here in the Rio Grande Valley by far than any other, than any other firm. So they're very well-liked and respected here in the valley, and they're committed to the valley. They're here. They have clients all around us. So, you know. Anyway, that's who we, that's who we chose, and that's about it.
Mayor, can I, can I make a motion on agenda item nine, agenda item ten, and agenda item eleven altogether?
Actually, we're going to do one at a time.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion on agenda item nine to accept our financial advisory team's recommendation of Estrada Hinojosa Investment Bankers.
That is item number eleven. So.
Oh.
So, I'm sorry, it's okay. Item number eleven, Councilman Hoff.
Well, I, I can do item nine. That's the bond council. I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial advisory team's recommendation for bond council Norton Rose Fulbright.
Councilman Hoff made a motion to, to select Norton Rose Fulbright. I need a second.
A second.
I would also like to comment, Mr. Mayor, that I agree with the committee that as, as an attorney, I can tell you Norton Rose Fulbright has an absolute impeccable reputation.
Thank you. Mayor Proten, Yvonne seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten. Go ahead.
I'll make, I'll make a, I'll make a motion on item ten to accept our financial advisory team's recommendation of Ferris, Flynn, and Medina.
Councilman Hoff makes a motion. I need a second. A second. Councilwoman Lisa Taylor, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to accept our financial advisory team's recommendation of Estrada Hinojosa Investment Bankers.
Councilman Hoff makes the motion. I need a second. A second. Mayor Proten, Yvonne seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also, I want to take the time here real quick to thank Howard Tazo and John Top. You have no idea how many hours this entails, ladies and gentlemen. And we have been working on this for several months now. Howard, thank you. John, thank you. Senator Palm Valley, Senator Palm Valley, need to understand all the work that you've done for me. As.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I learned a lot.
Yeah, so did I. I've learned a lot too. Thank you.
There's, I, I think there's something to be said about an old dog learning new tricks, but.
And this, this dog is. You, a lot of new tricks here in the last few months.
I'm that first one.
I, I, Matt, I know that you're on. I'm not sure if Stephanie is on. Matt, would you like to say a few words? Matt is, Matt Lee is from Norton Rose Fulbright.
Absolutely. Mayor, city council, everyone, thank you very much for entrusting us to guide you through this process. As I've mentioned before, this is personal to me, born and raised in Palm Valley. So, you know, I'm, I'm here to help in any way that I can. So honored to be representing you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Is Stephanie also with us or she's not with us today?
No, she's not. She has a conflict this evening.
It's okay.
And Ms. Taylor, I reached out to Mr. Gagnon for you. I think I forwarded his response to you back in October, so he said, says to say hello.
I appreciate it. I miss, miss hanging out with him with the COVID.
Matt, thank you very much. Okay. Item number twelve. Discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the special meeting of December eighth and the regular meeting of December fifteenth. Any comments or concerns, corrections on the minutes?
If our, if our pit bull reviewer of minutes, Councilwoman Lisa Taylor approves them, I do too.
Well, as, as the OCD reader of the minutes, I have to tell you that this time around, I only found one typo.
All right.
And how ironic that the typo is the actual misspelling of my name.
Oh.
And it is, it is the minutes from the December fifteenth meeting, and it is page two towards the top, and it says, Councilwoman Tay Lior.
Tay Lior.
Tay Lior. So that, that's a new version. So anyway, that's, that's, that's the only typo, Sylvia.
Oh, I see it. I see it.
Oh, yes.
I see it.
Hey, let's just change, Sylvia, let's just change her name to Pit Bull.
There you go.
Oh, no.
I like that. Okay. I moved it.
I moved that we accept the minutes with the addition of the correction stated by Councilwoman.
Councilman Wade makes a motion. I need a second.
A second.
Councilwoman Taylor, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I do want to make a quick, before we get into the meet, I'll give you some time to, to discuss, to look over the consent agenda items and see if you have any concerns, your questions. I do want to make a a formal comment for you guys. As you know, Ms., Ms. Gibbs touched on it, this, this, on the statement that she turned in that we still have some water issues. We still have some sewage issues. Now that you have hired, I guess if you want to call our bond counsel, Matt Lee, and our financial advisors Estrada Hinojosa, and of course, our engineer, David Flynn. We kind of have started working on putting a package together to present to the citizens of Palm Valley of how to repair our water pressure issues, our smelly sewage issues that we have. We do have something to present to you. Unfortunately, we have a time limit. I would like to hold a special city council meeting on February tenth. It's Wednesday, February tenth, six P M. Where our financial advisors and our bond council and engineer would like to present something to the council in order for you to approve a bond election for May first election. As I told, as I mentioned earlier in another meeting, I placed a lot of burden on you to make this decision of twenty-four dollars a month. I'm not going to place that burden on the city council. I'm going to place this burden on the citizens of Palm Valley. Citizens of Palm Valley, we need an additional twenty-two million dollars to repair our water pressure, water system issues, water pipes underneath the ground. We also need that amount of money to repair the sewage pipes and sewage issues that we have that was created or damaged by the twenty nineteen flood. So with that said, there's an additional twenty-two million dollars worth of projects that we need to start. As you counsel, as you know, as you've heard, that there's a lot of complaints about the water sewage quality. I can assure you that the quality of the water is in no danger as we have T C Q here, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality here, testing our water constantly. There is no issues with the water. However, there is issues with the pipes that are underneath the ground. So with that said, I will be asking the council to place this item, this, this bond election for May the first, and let the citizens of Palm Valley decide if they want to raise their property taxes in order to pay for this. So I will send out the, I will send out the invite for this meeting here after we finish here. So February tenth, ladies and gentlemen, will be our special meeting to ask the council to place a bond election on May the first, which is our regular city elections. Okay? With that said, consent agenda, there's items there. Do I have any comments, questions, or concerns on the consent agenda?
Will this meeting also be zoomed, your honor?
Yes, ma'am. We are, we are kind of forced to have this meeting via Zoom. As you know, the state of Texas, Governor Abbott, has not allowed meetings of more than ten people. Just right now, we have seven people in city hall right now. We are spaced pretty much, as you can see, we're spaced out. There is really no more room for other people to be in city hall. And for the safety of our employees, we will remain closed. We've been very lucky that we have not lost none of our employees to COVID. So we want to keep it that way. We need our city to keep on operating and we need these folks to keep on coming to work. So city hall will remain closed. Unfortunately, the Open Meetings Act has been suspended for by the governor of Texas. How long that's going to be, we don't know, but I'm sure it's going to be a very long time from now. So with that said, that special meeting will be via Zoom as well.
Fine, thank you.
Any, any questions on the consent agenda?
I'm moving that we approve the consent agenda.
Councilman Wade is, makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, please keep Cynthia Thompson's father in your prayers. We don't know exactly what is going on just quite yet. But I'm sure she would be here in our meeting if it wasn't serious. So there's something going on there. So I'll try to keep you updated this month and drug camp. With that said, Mr. Hoff, this is your favorite motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to, to make my favorite motion. I hereby declare this meeting over.
I need a second.
A second.
Councilman Jerry Wade, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We close the meeting at six fifty-nine. Thank you very much and good night.
Good night.